Here it is. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
All right. My name is John Bartlett. I'm the director of this board. And we are here for the February 27th meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, including our celebration of Black History Month and the presentation of our budget. So we've got a big night ahead, and we're so glad that you're all here to be part of it. Let's begin, Lou, as always, with a roll call.
Yes. County Commissioners Cruz.
Present.
Duffy.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
James.
Here.
Lapour.
Here.
Deputy Director Lozara.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here.
And the announcement of the open public meetings law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including annual notice, adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
We're now going to do three things, all of them standing. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by our reverend clergy, followed by a moment of silence.
Please join me in the flag of the United States of America, the true and eternal court of justice, on the nation, on the God, individual, whether we be individuals or all.
We're going to have a lively meeting tonight, I think. And I want you to know that all these people are God-fearing and fair. So be...
I don't think it was a contract.
Be nice to them, all right? I am the chaplain to the commissioners, and it's my pleasure, since we have a wonderful minister who almost flew by. Did you go past the speed limit? At least he's not lying. He came all the way up from Trenton. So I'm very happy to introduce the Reverend Dr. Kenneth Clayton, who is the pastor of St. Luke Baptist Church, and also the president of the local branch of the NAACP. So he is going to lead us in prayer, and I ask you all to give him your attention.
May we join together in a word of prayer. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, that was brought us thus far on the way, that was by thy might, that is into thy light, keep us forever, and thy path we pray. We gather in this space, inviting your presence to allow us to be peaceful, to be cooperative, that we might continue the work of your community to make it better, safer, and whole. Bless our leaders, and bless all who share this time of gathering and discussion, that we might continue to do the work that makes our community better. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces, as well as those who have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,297 residents of Passaic County. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, I will take a motion to approve the minutes of our February 13th, 2022.
Make that motion.
Second. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Stand.
James. Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. I'll take a motion for approval of proclamations.
I'll make that motion.
Second. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. And that brings us to our administrative report. Matthew?
Director, yes. This evening, we have our rescheduled Black History Month celebration, which I'm going to turn back over to you as the master of ceremonies.
All right. Terrific. Welcome, everyone. And I appreciate particularly with our honorees, the fact that we were supposed to be doing this two weeks ago, and we had snow on the 13th and made the decision for everyone's safety to postpone our Black History Month celebration to today. I'm so glad to have Pastor Clayton with us to deliver the invocation as part of that program, as well as four extraordinary honorees. I had the privilege last week of attending church at the First Baptist Church here in Patterson, which was celebrating its 200th anniversary. And it was an opportunity to reflect on the long history of the African-American community here in Passaic County and in our region. For those of you who do know, Passaic County's slogan is "Rich History, Bright Future." And I hope we can say both of those things about our African-American community. At the First Baptist Church, that was a church that was formed in 1824 and became the first integrated church in Patterson just three years later in 1827, integrated by a member of the parish who was himself an enslaved person at that time. And you carry forward through the history that we remember. The Hantoon von Rensselaer monument reminds us of the Underground Railroad and the fight for freedom in this area. This was a place where the abolition movement was early and strong. And then, of course, you bring it forward into the modern history and the fact that Patterson was one of the last places that Reverend King preached before his tragic and untimely murder. And so much that has happened since then, I, you know, there's no point in listing the firsts because there are so many. But the marvelous thing that we can say is that we have got an extraordinary group of people in this community, not just in Patterson but across Passaic County, that are part of every industry, every sector of service and government, and the private sector, and teaching, and so much more. The national theme for Black History Month this year is the arts, and you're going to meet some extraordinary artists and community servants here this evening. We do have four honorees, and one by one, my colleagues and I are going to come down and recognize them. But before we do that, Lou, are we technically ready for our musical interlude? Want to do that after? Okay. Okay. So ordinarily, one of our Black History Month traditions here in Passaic County is to have the Rosa Parks Choir come and sing to us. They were all set for the 13th. Could it make it this evening? So y'all are going to be filling in a little bit later on. We're going to sing "Lift Every Voice" and sing together, but we're going to do that after we recognize our honorees. So I want to ask my colleague Orlando Cruz to start us off with a recognition of our friend Sharif Bug.
All right. How's everybody doing tonight? Thank you, guys, for being here. I have the distinct honor of presenting this proclamation to the good brother Sharif Bug. As a resident of the city of Patterson myself, I see firsthand the amazing work that Sharif has done in our community, that continues to do in our community with so many different projects and initiatives and outreach to those that are the most vulnerable and preserving the history of African-American culture, as well as he does. If you look at the banners that are hung right to my right, to your left, that is part of the work that Mr. Bug has done. He presented those banners here, set them up, and just highlighting the amazing contributions of so many African-American individuals, and particularly Pattersonians and residents of Passaic County. So it's just a phenomenal thing to recognize these individuals and not just honor them and remember them during African-American History Month, but just all throughout the year for their amazing contributions, because as all of us know, African-American history is American history. So I will read the proclamation, and I'll ask Sharif to come up and accept it. So whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month, and in recognition of the unbounded contributions and achievements made by the exceptional African-Americans that shape and continue to shape our nation and county's rich history, bright future, this Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Sharif Bug. Whereas Sharif Bug was born in the city of Patterson on March 25, 1973, he is one of 12 siblings and the product of a single-person household. Whereas Sharif Bug graduated from Passaic County Technical Institute located in Wayne in 1992, he earned an associate's degree in child development from Kane University and enrolled in Passaic County Community College, and after completing junior college, transferred to Somerset College and earned a bachelor's degree in family counseling. Whereas Sharif Bug earned a certificate of completion for 40 hours of hands-on training and crisis intervention provided by the Passaic County Police Academy. He is currently the Director of Growing in Grace Counseling Group, Patterson Stigma-Free Zone Ambassador, Vice President of the Bug Foundation, Board Member of the Patterson Community Health Center, Commissioner of the Patterson Rent Leveling Board, Patterson Prevention Project, and New Jersey State Resource Foster Parents, and former Patterson Task Force Board Member. Whereas Sharif Bug is a former Associate Minister of Community Baptist Church of Love, he served as the Assistant Director of Family Life Center, a member of the Patterson Pastors' Workshop, member of the Patterson Pastors' Chaplain Committee, and after serving over 10 years, he moved his membership and accepted the position of Assistant Pastor of Kianoa Christian Ministries. Sharif Bug completed his mental health first aid training in 2017 and utilized the training to conduct three major citywide mental health awareness events that attracted over 1,100 individuals. Whereas Sharif Bug in 1998 worked for the United Methodist Church of Christ Day Care as a teacher. Three years later, he accepted a position as a teacher's assistant for the Patterson Urban Leadership Charter School. And in 2003, the charter school became an entity of Patterson Public School District, and he remained an employee of the district for close to 21 years. Whereas Sharif Bug is married to his wife Faith Campbell, and they both cherish their three children, Nandi, Ebony, and Jeremiah Bug. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of Commissioners that hereby publicly recognize and applaud Sharif Bug for his significant contributions he has made to the County of Passaic and to the community. And let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes Sharif Bug health and happiness in all his future endeavors. Congratulations, Sharif.
Mike is yours.
On behalf of the Bug Foundation, we thank you guys for acknowledge the work that we are doing. My mother had this vision a few years ago after we lost our niece to gun violence, and we built this initiative around building self-respect within our community. This is a great reason why we take pride in the homicide curriculum, which help encourage young people, African-Americans, to take great pride into their community. But as I spoke to my mother this morning, who is the president of this organization, we both kind of came into agreement as we started this initiative to really take time to recognize that it wouldn't really make this movement were really one person who helped us out. When we were trying to build this homicide festival, if any of you who live in the city of Patterson, you know you are required to get a permit to host these events in the city of Park, and it always require security and EMT. And at the grassroots organization, we didn't have the funds, we didn't have the support to really to move forward. And our application was not able to go forward, but we wanted to do it. So my mother said, why don't you reach out to Richard Burnett? And we reached out to him, and he said he would help us. And I wanted to take the time to say that for the last, for the last four years that we did this homicide festival and the thing that we do, he has always been supportive of what we've done. And we know that we couldn't have stepped this way without acknowledge him. And I know it's Black History Month, but we also want to contribute to those that helped us get there, even though Black History culture have opened the door for a lot of other nationalities. But we can't refuse the work that people who helped us get to where we are going and what we have done. So I just want to take a few minutes to have a moment of silence for our good brother, Passaic County Chef, Richard Burnett, for what he has done to help us get where we are going with the homicide festival. You have the brochure with you, so I don't need to talk about what the Bug Foundation, you can take that home and read it and go on our website and get the rest of the information. So let's have a moment of silence. Amen. And I'd be a failed to admit that my family here, my wife, Faith Bug, my sister, Commissioner Bridgette Eric, and also one of our board members, Willie Pedican. Thank you, and God bless you.
Congratulations. Let's slide right in there.
And for those of you who don't know what Sharif was talking about, the homicide curriculum was adopted by the state of New Jersey a couple of years ago. It requires the teaching of African-American history, and I know that one of our honorees was instrumental in making that happen. I want to introduce my colleague Pat Lapour, who's going to recognize our next honoree.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Christopher Fabor Muhammad, please step up. Are you here? There you are. Excellent, excellent. Talk about timing. All right. Whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month, and in recognition for the unbounded contributions and achievements made by exceptional African-Americans that shaped and continue to shape our nation and our country, our county's rich history and bright future, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Christopher Fabor Muhammad. And Christopher Fabor Muhammad attended Rutgers Mason Gross School of the Arts in New Brunswick and New Jersey Institute of Technology, where he studied architecture, and in 2008 earned his master's in education from Caldwell University. There you go. There you go. Christopher Muhammad started his teaching career in 2001 at Patterson's International High School, John F. Kennedy High School in 2008, Patterson Public School Number Five in 2010, and later moved on to teaching as a professor at William Patterson University. Christopher Muhammad is the founder of Creative Force Incorporated that produces after-school programs, paint and sips parties, and single-panel cartoon called Amerikids, which addresses illiteracy and miseducation through self-acknowledgement and whimsical humor and imaginary. Christopher Muhammad has been involved in several Passaic County projects that include moving murials in 2017, art workshops for youth in conjunction with the Cultural and Historic Affairs in Art in the Park, Tuesdays at the Plaza, Juneteenth since 2018, actively participates in the county Shades of Greatness and Hinchcliffe Stadium and its Legacy Exhibit, and the art installation at Dave Mansion Washington Headquarters regarding slavery in Passaic County. And whereas Christopher Muhammad achieved nationwide attention with projects such as murals for educational institution in Los Angeles, California, and recently achieved a grand induction in Rutgers University African-American Alumni Alliance Hall of Fame for, it's above accomplishments, and that's a mouthful. Now therefore be it proclaimed for the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that hereby publicly recognize and applauds Christopher Fabor Muhammad for the significant contributions he has made to the County of Passaic and to the community, and be it further proclaimed that the Board wishes Christopher Fabor Muhammad health and happiness, which really means everything, in all of his future endeavors. Congratulations.
I want to thank first almighty God for blessing me with the gift and giving me guidance of how to use it as a ministry in education, in arts and culture, in trade and commerce, to work alongside others, many of who I see in this room, to make our communities a more decent place to live. And I'm overjoyed and honored and grateful and thankful to the Passaic County Board of Commissioners for acknowledging and recognizing the contribution and the effort and the hard work that myself and my team put forth to transform our communities. I want to thank my mom for being with me today. Thank you, Mom. Eighty-four years old and going strong, still going strong. Blessed to have her. And really, I don't have really much else to say, but just thank you, and let's continue to keep this work going, not just a month, but all year round. Mom, will you come up? Can you take a picture with me? Is my niece here? Mary, you can come up.
Congratulations, brothers.
Grab the jacket and... Grab the jacket and check what size it is. Years of being a DJ.
All right. That was wonderful. Continuing the arts and education theme, I want to introduce my colleague Sandy Lozara, who's going to recognize our next honoree.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to invite Talina LaChelle Queen to come on up. Who knew we'd be seeing each other so soon? So this past Saturday, Prospect Park celebrated Black History Month, and Queen, as everyone knows you by, read an amazing poem that really took me, made me think, because I'm not a poetry person. And I said to Queen, well, how does it come to you? Like, how do these beautiful poems that you write, do they just, like, you have to think about it for weeks on end, or they just come to you? And Queen told me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it depends on how it touches her and what the topic is. And sometimes it comes really easy, and sometimes it takes a while to write a poem. And I was just so impressed because, again, I was never a person who embraced poetry like I did Saturday. You really did touch me. So I was given this opportunity to present the proclamation to you, and I just want to read it to everybody, because Queen has done so much in her life, and she deserves to be recognized for it. So the proclamation begins with, whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month, and in recognition of the unbounded contributions and achievements made by exceptional African-Americans that shaped and continue to shape our nation and the county's rich history and bright future, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Talina LaChelle Queen. So whereas Talina LaChelle Queen graduated from Rosa Parks School of Fine and Performing Arts in June 1991, received her Bachelor of Arts in Broadcasting from Montclair State University, received a teaching certificate and a Master of Fine Arts in Creative Writing and Poetics from the University of Washington, and a nonprofit certification from Mendoza Business School at the University of Notre Dame. Whereas Talina LaChelle Queen is a first poet laureate of Patterson, New Jersey since 2018, and is a founder and executive director of the Patterson Poetry Festival. Her efforts and leadership have resulted in a seven-day celebration of the arts called Patterson Art Week, and that usually takes place from August 1st to August 7th. Whereas Talina LaChelle Queen is a creator and host of a monthly literary showcase called Power of Words, hosted at the Patterson Museum, and distributes books to the little free libraries in the city parks of Patterson, New Jersey. And whereas Talina LaChelle Queen is a founder and president of Her Best Self, a program within a national Black United Fund that empowers young women, chair of the Patterson Art Commission, member of the Grassroots Arts Commission, founder of Wordsheet, Inc., president of New Family Foundation, Inc., and is an inductee to the University of Washington Hall of Excellence. That's pretty good. Whereas Talina LaChelle Queen is an adjunct professor in the Black History Department at the State University of New York at New Paltz, teaching Black poetry and drama and Black and Latino children's literature, and an English teacher at Eastside High School in Patterson, New Jersey. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Talina LaChelle Queen for the significant contributions she has made in the County of Passaic and to the community, and be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Talina LaChelle Queen health and happiness in all her future endeavors. Health and happiness, that's the best part, right? Peace and blessings, family. Now, some of you have not heard me speak before, and we have a tradition. Some of you know it. If I say peace, family, then you say... Peace, Queen, somebody knew. All right. So let's try it out. All right, so let's try it out. I'm going to say peace, family, and you're all just going to say peace, queen. Let's say, peace, family?
Peace, queen.
Oh, thank you, you sound so good. Thank you for being here, and thank you to my friends and family who are here, especially for me. I know there's so many reasons. I see my spiritual mother here. Thank you, Ms. Elise Evans, for being here, and all of the rest of the people who are here, especially for me. I appreciate you very much. I know there's a lot of things to be concerned about, parking, the time of day, what you're going to be doing later, all of the things. And so it is not lost on me that you are here today. I am very excited about this year's Black History Month, but if you know me, you know I'm always excited about Black History Month. But this month in particular, this year, because we are celebrating the arts, and there are so many reasons why we should be celebrating the arts. Some people don't know that they love arts, but it affects your life every single day. If you brush your teeth, the toothpaste tube was probably designed by an artist, right? Your curtains, your chairs, your clothes, everything about your life is art. When you want to relax, you play music, right? Everything about your life is art. And sometimes in our school district, we want to get rid of that first. But I submit to you that it is one of the most important things. So everyone here who has any way of doing anything about it, make sure we have arts, because that is the thing that moves us forward. I want to take a moment too, to appreciate the other people who are being honored here, especially my classmate Christopher Faber Muhammad. I appreciate you, thank you for the art that you're putting in this community. Sharif Bug, thank you for the work that you're doing. Madam Assemblywoman, thank you very much for the work that you are doing. It is, one of the things that impressed me today was the other honorees. Hi, Ruby. That's one of the things that really impressed me today. Some of us have opportunities to be honored on different occasions, but it's very different when you look at the list of people who are there, and you go, okay, this is different, I'm in very good company. So I applaud you all. Congratulations on tonight. I hope you feel like you're in good company too, and I'll continue to do my best to help you feel that way. Commissioner Bartlet asked me for poetry tonight, is that all right? All right. I had a hard time choosing. I'm not doing the dear artist that you heard of. Are you disappointed? A little bit?
I'll be okay.
You'll be all right. All right, so, Black poets, since the turn of this century, and Black writers, which I am one of, have been recording Black history in their writing since the beginning. If you need to know more about Black history, I submit to you to go and read the early 1900s and late 1800s Black poets and Black writers. You're going to learn a lot there. A lot of our history is not recorded in textbook, and if you know what is happening in the country, there is an intentional movement to erase Black history right now. I didn't make that up. But we have a preservation in Black poetry since the beginning, yes? Now, keep in mind that these folks, many of which had to break the law to write these pieces of work. It was illegal for a long time for people of color, whether they were free or enslaved, to learn to read and write. So it is a big deal that you can see and hear and read from these people about this history in their own voices, all right? And for that reason, I'm going to read to you, Ain't Nobody Got No Time For Love Poems. Because these poems, like my predecessors, they have to have jobs. They're here for a reason, so we don't write about pink sweaters, we write about what's going on in our community, yes? All right. Ain't nobody got no time for no love poems. Ain't nobody thinking about no love, don't nobody care about no love, when we got the blues and we got bills, and we got blues songs about the bills. Don't nobody care about your doggone lips? Or how, when they touch me anywhere, like I said, ain't nobody got no time for no love poems. And even if we did have time for love poems, ain't we heard everything there is to hear about them? Love and lust, and what love and lust wants us to do? Like I said, ain't nobody got no time for no love poems. We got to get ready for war with these poems. Arm our children with these poems, record our history with these poems. These poems were intended to apprehend, you know, the ones who weren't running away, got taken away, are still away, and can't find their way back home, even with the right to a boat. These poems praise Ghana, praise Marcus Garvey, praise Gullah Island, praise the souls forgotten in the Middle Passage, praise the thieves who stole, admonish the ones who sold, and the ones who bought who was being sold, and the ones who bury us beneath piles of legislation and water. So much water. These are protest poems, ain't nobody got no time, no time for no love poems. We got to make these words ammunition. These poems have jobs, real serious issues must be tackled with these poems. Can't nobody be wrestling with thoughts of increased heartbeats, and panting, and panting, and panting, and panting? And, like I said, ain't nobody got no time for no love poems. No, somebody got to write about blood, and bullets, and pain, and poverty, and all the isms, and the cousins of the isms, and Karen. Somebody got to write about Karen. So ain't got no time, no time for no love poems. And even if we did have time for love poems, your body, that is my body too, and our tied souls, which are old souls, would blend with heart and mind, and we'd make the kind of love that be producing love, children, who we be trying to teach and protect, and write poems to and for and about, like this one, that wasn't trying to be no love poem, but man, ain't it love that make us write these poems? Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it. Thank you. Her question is, where can I get one of these books?
You going to give me yours?
I have one. You have at least one fan, that's good.
Hold on, don't go anywhere, we're going to take a picture.
Yes, yes.
Come here, in front.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Elise is coming up, Liz is coming up, Lisa's coming up.
Look at Elise. Is that Elise? Look at her. Better?
So, can I say one thing?
You can do anything you want.
I can do anything I want, I like to do anything.
Anything you want.
Tonight, the City Council of Patterson is voting on a resolution to make October Patterson Poetry Month. The council is to do the right thing, right? So our vision for that resolution is that we bring poetry into the community, not just at the community, not just in schools, but everywhere, and that that festival that we have in October is a torch of the community. We need a poetry house. Need a building.
Bruce, Bruce. We got a lot, we got a lot of poetry there.
So, thank you for your support of that, and we really hope that that's another way for us to give young people a voice, all people a voice, because what you are thinking, what you are doing, and how you are feeling is critically important to not just arts, but just to your health and your prosperity. So I'm very grateful to the City Council that they're going to vote this in tonight, and so we'll be celebrating everywhere, all over.
Are you doing it?
Yeah.
Sure. Then I got to do some.
I did.
Good point. Okay, let me just make acknowledgements. Let me do some acknowledgements.
No, let me talk and do my thing, and do whatever you want to do after that. So I am actually very lucky. I've known Assemblyman Sumter for a couple of years. And I've been around Patterson. You know, Patterson, this is exciting, because everybody thinks Patterson is a horrible city, and it's, people are shot, and there's nothing going on here. This is what's going on here. The talent, the talent in Patterson, New Jersey is unequal than any other town or city in the county of Passaic. It is living, it is developing, and you're, come up here, because you're a big part of it, and, you know, you've been in the trenches for god knows how long. I'm older, so I could say that to you.
I knew you would.
And, you know, so let me just tell you some things. She has worked in a hospital. It's never been where she's out there doing nothing. She's always in the community doing something for somebody. So I just want to tell a little story. Well, you know, when people were getting at, there were kids who were demonstrating Black Lives Matter, and there was a reaction to that from some cops, there was a reaction to that from some other people. She jumped on board with me, and we held meetings for a year with kids from Passaic, Patterson, Wayne, and Clifton, who did those marches. And then she got Dalton Price, and a guy named Derek Fogg out of Clifton, and Eric Luger out of West Woodland Park, West Patterson, to do a meeting, because what we said was, you can circle your wagons, or you can get together and talk. Everything was on the table, everything was on the table. So nobody was going to be disrespected, nobody, you got to say anything you wanted to say. And the kids did, and so did Dalton, and so did Derek Fogg. They did what they had to do. And at the end of it, she got legislation passed, which says that every single police academy, and every cop that goes through a police academy, has to be schooled in community policing. They have to have an attachment, they have to have an attachment to the people that they are serving. And so they do. And it got better in Passaic County, at least in our academy, and I'm very proud of you for doing that, because it mattered. I hate reading these things, because I know her so long, that this doesn't, doesn't really say it, but what I said says it. She's out there helping people all the time. And look, Kenny's still around. You know, so help her. Let me do this. So whereas the month of February has been designated the Black History Month, and in recognition of the unbounded contributions and achievements made by exceptional African-Americans that shaped and continue to shape our nation and our county's rich history and bright future, the Board of County Commissioners and the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Assemblywoman Siobhan D. E. Sumter. Whereas, yeah, you can clap for that. And someday you'll tell me what the E is for. Anyway. Whereas Siobhan D. E. Sumter earned her Masters in Business Administration from Fairleigh Dickinson University, Silverman College of Business, and completed her undergraduate degree in Political Science from King University. And whereas Siobhan Sumter is the Chair of the New Jersey Legislative Black Caucus, and has been a dedicated member of the New Jersey Legislature District since 2012, representing the 33rd Legislative District, which encompasses Patterson. Whereas Siobhan Sumter serves as Chair of the Assembly Committee on Community Development and Women's Affairs, Vice Chair of Environmental and Natural Resources and Solid Waste, contributing to a valued member of the Labor Committees, and currently serves as President and CEO of Children's Aid and Family Services. Whereas Siobhan is an advocate for job growth, women's health, voting rights, civil rights, criminal justice reform, and demonstrated her commitment by championing legislation to address Black maternal and infant mortality in the state of New Jersey, which also is what the governor's wife was involved in. You know, the statistics for somebody who's of color, a woman of color, surviving a pregnancy is not anywhere near what it is for white women. So there is a disparity that she's trying to address, that she's trying to address, and is doing a good job of doing that. Whereas Siobhan has used her diverse talents and skills she gained academically and professionally through community service to improve the lives of people in various communities, and her drive to help people has fueled her desire to serve in elected office, God help you. And whereas Siobhan E. Sumter and her husband Kenneth are the proud parents of daughter Tyler, daughter Tyler I. Sumter, and son Kenneth Sumter Jr. And now therefore be proclaimed that Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Siobhan Sumter for the significant contribution she has made to the county of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Siobhan Sumter health, happiness, and her future endeavors. And you deserve it, and there are so many people who are going to be alive because of you.
Thank you. Thank you to Bruce James for that personal introduction. I hate having these things read, because it's just the work that we do. For those of you from Patterson, you know we don't create any junk. So I am pleased, because the honorees are all my 90s graduates, we're 70s babies that came up in the ranks. So, for Sharif Bug, we were in NAACP Youth Council together, so when you talk about advocacy, love of reading, we found our voices there. For Christopher Faber Muhammad, he graduated with my brother from Rosa Parks School of Fine and Performing Arts. And again, the talent and the desire to give back, because so much was poured into us. And then for our queen, poet laureate, again, she just continues to use her voice to educate the next generation. We are the state that produced Langston Hughes. Uh, we are the state that produced Langston Hughes and Zora Neale Hurston, and we have our own queen who continues the dream of giving voice to poetry, writing, and words. To each of you, uh, for us, Black History Month, community is everything. Community is everything, and that is what family is. If there's a need, we always take care of that need. Uh, to, uh, the Commissioner Director, John Bartlett, thank you, uh, for making sure that, um, I was recognized to Bruce James, uh, who really knew me when, when there was no titles and literally I was sort of shadowing my godmother, Elise Evans, around, uh, learning about the things that plague you, CWA, we were fighting for you all, uh, way, 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 way back when. So, uh, I am only the second African-American woman to hold this seat in a 221-year legislative history. To our credit, to our credit community, the first one is in this room, a living legend, Elise Evans, please stand. To, to my team, who I can't do this work without, I wanna acknowledge Rodney DeVor, who has been working with me since the beginning. I'm gonna make you stand and embarrass you a little bit. There you go, that's Rodney DeVor. To Judith Vanelis, who's a senior advisor, and Shanil, thank you for being with me and uh, being my rider dies. Uh, to, uh, a man who, who, let's see, how do I wanna say this? Yes, yes, let me see, since we were talking about this ain't a love poem, but you know. To, to a man who joined me, uh, in wanting to make a difference in the city of Patterson. Right? Our coming together, uh, was because we wanted to see change, and we knew, uh, Councilwoman Ruby Cotton, uh, as I've seen you work my entire life in the neighborhood, being in the 4th Ward, we wanted to make a change for our community. We wanted to be a part of that change. We went to school, we came back home, and we worked on this campaign for the 5th Ward, y'all, we got our butts whooped. But, we stayed together 26 years later. To my husband Kenneth, love you to life. And then to another special Kenneth, uh, who is here, uh, who I get to call Pastor Brother, NAACP President, um, who is really just a source of the earth, who leads for this community, who loves hard for this community, Reverend Dr. Kenneth Dalray Clayton, I thank you for joining us today. And to my elders, uh, who are here, uh, and church family, community, friends, sisters, brothers, I thank you all for being here, for showing up. It's these type of programs that part of the country wanna abolish. Black history is American history, and as much as we move and as much as I travel around the state, uh, to talk about the things that are ailing us, the reparations and the rest of restorative justice that we need to take on, it's nothing like being recognized at home. It's nothing like knowing you're coming from Trenton, and, and I was petted to the metal today, uh, coming home, trying to get here, uh, because my community was gonna celebrate me with some fabulous honorees. So, I thank you truly from the depths of my heart for acknowledging the work that I do daily alongside each of you. Uh, so, uh, with that, uh, I thank you, and we are gonna take a picture, and we're going to have Lou come around and do it. All right. So, Mr. Sumter, will you please join me?
Yeah, Michael Johnson. All right, well, ain't got no time for no love songs, but we do have, uh, time for a couple of acknowledgements. Uh, I wanna thank Reverend Clayton again very much for, uh, for coming, our NAACP leader in the city of Patterson, as well as, as St. Luke's. Uh, Shavanda mentioned a lot of folks here, uh, the person who used to be in the chair that I'm in, former freeholder, former, uh, Assemblywoman Elise Evans, Councilwoman Ruby Cotton, our Passaic County surrogate, Zoila Casanova, is here with us, uh, as well as my, Mayor Michael Johnson of the township of Haal, Borough of Haalden, excuse me, Borough of Haalden, uh, who hosted a wonder, who was actually the, uh, emcee and host of the Bug Foundation Gala very recently and did an exceptional job and is doing great work up in Haalden. I wanna acknowledge our undersheriffs, Kevin Dixon, Nartapacha, and Humberto Cuadrado, who are here with us, as well as Commander Rob Scott. Uh, Manchester Board of Ed Commissioner Bridget Eric is here with us. Um, our friend Wahida Mohammed, essential community organizer and the Grandparents Resource Center person who makes stuff happen and is always easy to spot. Thank you for being with us. Um, this is the part where we all get up and sing. With any luck, you're gonna have words on the screen, there's gonna be music, um, unless Lou tells me otherwise. Okay, sure. Um, oh, and also, um, our, uh, excuse me, Hawthorne Board of Ed member Jennifer Aarontrout is here with us as well. Uh, thank you, Lou. Um, so, with any luck, there'll be words, there'll be music, we'll all get to stretch our legs for a moment, sing the Black National Anthem, and then, uh, close out this wonderful celebration. So, Lou, hit it. Thank you all. Just give our MIS crew a second. All right. Well, the karaoke, uh, didn't work there on the screens, but for all of you who knew the words, extra points, uh, and that's what happens when you do it live. Thank you all so much for being part of our Black History Month, uh, presentation, and I will actually turn it back to Matt now to continue the administrative report.
Yes, Director. Now we have, uh, as you know, we are introducing our 2024 budget, and if I could ask the IT Department to set up the computer, I'm gonna go down there.
Right. So, um, while they're, uh, while they're setting up, um, I wanna first of all, uh, thank all our guests again. Um, we do have a buffet downstairs for Black History Month. Uh, I will confess, I don't know if it feeds 250, but, uh, for those of you, uh, who would like to join us downstairs, uh, feel free to go ahead and do that right now. Uh, for those of you, uh, who are following along, I just wanna explain what's coming up next as part of the administrator's report is the presentation of our 2024 budget. That'll be followed by some other business regarding, uh, borrowing and bonds and so forth, after which we will come to county commissioner reports and the public portion of the meeting. So, just so you know what's, what's ahead, um, the public portion is, uh, a little ways away yet. Let's, uh, let's give it one minute while folks clear out, and then, uh, we will take it from there. All right. Matt and team, why don't you guys go ahead and get started?
All right, Director. Thank you. As you know, um, good evening, everyone, we're introducing our 2024 budget tonight.
Um, if the, if there's anything our IT folks can do to up the, um, what we hear, that would be great with all the bodies in the room, it, uh, we lose a little bit of volume. Thank you. Matt, go ahead.
All right, we'll try that again. Uh, good eve, good evening, Commissioners. Um, as you know, tonight, we are introducing our calendar year 2024 budget. Um, the budget process to get to tonight is about, uh, a six-month, um, work, uh, among myself, um, Mark Seaman, our deputy administrator, Rich Cahill, our CFO, uh, and Steve Wilcox, our, our county auditor. Um, as you know, the budget committee is chaired by Commissioner Pat LaPour, um, and is also, um, includes Director Bartlett and Commissioner Lazare. So, our first slide is just the highlight, uh, of what we're gonna talk about in this presentation, um, and also sort of broad strokes about what, what the 2024 budget encompasses. It's a, uh, 1.97% increase in the tax levy, which amounts to about $6.8 million, uh, in, in an increase from 2023. Um, that's related primarily to increased costs in both health benefits and prescription benefits, as you see, about, to about $7 million. This budget does a number of things that, uh, in our estimation is, um, both responsible financial practices, um, and most importantly protects the county's credit rating, which continues to be the highest in our county's history. Um, we've, uh, over the course of the last 12 months, successfully negotiated eight collective negotiations agreements, um, which we'll talk more about, um, what we, how we've worked with the unions to help contain both, uh, health insurance costs and prescription costs. And then, um, the fiscal responsibility that this board has demonstrated over the course of the last 10 years or so, or so, has allowed us to make, um, uh, significant investments, Passaic County's infrastructure, in our park system, in our golf course, in our roads, and in our bridges, which spurs economic development, um, increased investment in our county, makes more people wanna live, work, um, and visit. So, um, just going back to, um, our credit rating, which as I mentioned, is the, um, AA1, um, it's the highest in the history of Passaic County. Um, in the last report issued by Moody's, um, they talk about a lot of things that are important, um, in our preparing this budget, um, to maintain that credit rating. Um, healthy reserves, um, strong governance, um, active management of overspending, um, and the stable outlook reflects the expectation that the county's economic and financial position will continue to show strength. So, a lot of what we're doing here, um, is protecting this credit rating for future reviews by the financial rating agencies, um, to ensure that we aren't downgraded. Um, as I, as we talked about in, in last year's presentation, uh, Moody's has recently updated their rating criteria. We were put under review. Luckily, we, we were not downgraded, but, um, we are cognizant of ensuring that, um, all of the financial decisions that were recommended to this board are to ensure that we maintain our credit rating in the long term.
Okay, so this slide is showing, um, the tax rate over the last eight years. Uh, we've been able to lower the tax rate over the last eight years, and, and we've been able to do that through responsible budgeting. Um, and the, the lower tax rate is really a product of the tax levy as well as rising property values throughout the county. Okay, the next slide is, um, again, you know, we work hard to be responsible in budgeting and, uh, to stabilize taxes. So, again, the county levy has not increased in five of the last six years, and, and if you average that out over the last six years, it, it comes to about 0.33% per year. Okay, so now we're looking at a slide that, that reflects our fund balance over the last, eight years, and, uh, last eight years. And we had a very good year. We were able to increase surplus by about $8 million last year. Again, this is using conservative revenue estimates when we're budgeting. And we just want to point out that, you know, from the onset of the pandemic, we never needed to raise taxes. You know, our surplus helped us, it kept us in a position where we were stable and we never faltered. And we actually came out of the pandemic in a better position than, than we went into it.
And this, you know, it's an ongoing discussion between us about, you know, what is the correct surplus number for Passaic County to have. You know, Rich is right. During, during the pandemic, when a lot of governments were not, and Steve can speak to this, I'm sure, were not in a stable financial position to deal with the public health emergency, but Passaic County was. You know, not only did we have the resources at hand to respond effectively under Dr. Gungill's leadership, but also we didn't have to raise taxes. And not a lot of local and county governments can say that thing. And it's directly attributed to the fact that we're maintaining the fund balance levels that we are. It gives us flexibility to deal with unknowns. And, you know, that's, you know, we didn't know that a global pandemic was coming. And we don't know what the next financial crisis that, that is going to happen. We, but we're putting the, the board and the county in a position to deal with anything that comes out, comes, comes in front of us. You know, the, the only other thing I would mention is, is, you know, we get compared a lot to Union County, who's similarly sized, similar demographics. They maintain 196 million in fund balance. So while this is a healthy amount, you know, clearly Union County is maintaining more. So, you know, we think this is responsible and puts us in a position to deal with any type of circumstance that we might have to deal with over the course of a year.
Okay, so the, the next slide, replenishing and maintaining budget reserves. I mean, really, this is just a picture of our overall fund balance and key reserves and, and the financial position that we're in, which we believe is, is a great one. The, you know, Matt mentioned that this budget is increasing primarily because of health benefits this, this year. And we do have some concerns about rising costs and health benefits, and they are affecting us. And, and we believe that, you know, this, this increase will put us in the best position moving forward. You know, this year's budget is just not about this year, but it's how it affects us moving forward into the future.
Again, another thing, these reserves are important to the credit rating agencies, and it gives us flexibility to, to, to deal with more snow than we expected. Or, you know, if, if we, you know, have more lawsuits that we need to deal with in any given year, or if there's more health claims than expected, this gives us the flexibility to deal with those issues without negative impact to our budget.
Okay, and so finally, we talked about the, the tax rate, the overall county tax rate earlier, but it's also a product, that rate is a product of the county equalized values. And this, this shows equalized values between 2018 and 2023. And you can see over that period of time, the equalized values have increased $15 billion, which demonstrates that, you know, people want to be in Passaic County, and, and developers want to be here and, and develop business and, and help us grow.
Yeah, this, this means our economy locally in Passaic County is growing. It's growing every year, and it's primarily growing in our urban centers. You know, we're seeing huge jumps in Patterson, and in Passaic, and in other places where we haven't seen this type of investment. So this is, this is a positive thing that shows that people are coming to Passaic County and investing. Historically, you know, we've talked a lot about shared services and how we're working with municipalities on various ways to consolidate services and save tax dollars. I thought it might be prudent to just highlight our partnership with West Milford. As you know, we've served as the, the health officer in West Milford. For the last few years, we've recently extended that agreement for 20 years. Simultaneously, we worked with the township to convert one of their facilities that they didn't use into a satellite county office that's going to serve up county residents. So what we're doing is leasing from them a 20-year term facility, using a variety of state and federal grant sources. We're going to retrofit the building. I mean, it's going to house both clinic space for our health department and, and health department staff, a clinic, mental health and addiction services clinic, that'll serve up county residents, and also human services staff. And will also serve as a senior congregation site. We've now, our leasing space from a higher firehouse in West Milford, and we'll bring all of that under one roof. And it'll sort of be one-stop shopping for our up-county residents that, part of time, coming down to Patterson and Total. I, I just wanted to provide a brief update on where we stand with the consolidation of corrections operations with Bergen County and, and the redevelopment of our jail site. As you know, in 2021, we, the board executed an agreement with Bergen County to undertake our correctional services on behalf of the county. In April of last year, we completely stopped overnight stays of inmates. And the, the jail site currently transformed into a, a hub and transportation site. When someone was arrested, they would, they would get processed, and then get a physical, sometimes a meal, and then get transported to either Bergen or Hudson County. Over the last six months, work has been on, do you have a question, Director, or Commissioner? Oh, get it closer. Over the last six months, there has been ongoing work to upgrade the sheriff's headquarters in Wayne. Once we get to the point where we're going to demolish the jail, which bid openings for that are on March 6. Prior to that happening, we need to transition to Wayne. We expect the Department of Corrections to come in in the next week or so to give us our final inspection, and that transition will happen. And then just the dollars and cents of this agreement, it's been a 30, we have a 35% decrease in the corrections division salary and wage budget, and a 75% decrease in the operating expense budget line, which results to almost $12 million in savings in this budget because of that shared service agreement. You know, I talked previously about, and Rich had brought up, healthcare costs, prescription costs. Over the course of the last year, the, the board has ratified eight different extensions of collecting bargain agreements with unions. As you can see, we've kept them in a manageable financial impact to the budget, between 2 and 3%, depending on the unit. With the outlier being the paratransit division, what we found there was CDL drivers are just very much in demand right now. And with the number of vacancies we had, it was straining the division's ability to provide seniors with rides. It's also a, a very small unit, so it didn't have a huge impact in our budget. But that's why you see the one outlier there. But what we were able to do with all of these unions was agree to language that, that did two things. Either eliminated our traditional healthcare plan, which has been an ongoing effort that the previous county administrator had started, that I've continued to try and eliminate that plan, which is one of the most expensive plans in the state. It's more expensive than the, the highest plan offered by the state of New Jersey. And also, new language that brings our prescription spend under control. So we've done all of that over the course of these negotiations and these amendments. You know, we talked a lot about the investment in the Passaic County park system, and the next few slides are an overview of projects that are happening all over Passaic County because of the strong financial position that we're in. Rifle Camp Park has seen a transformation over the last five years. We just had a meeting with the Dr. Rose at the Passaic County Community College. We're about to open up a state-of-the-art environmental center at the top of Rifle Camp Park. We've just opened a beautiful amphitheater in the middle of the park. And, and finally, we're going to pave all the roads and, and the, and the parking lots so that it isn't bumpy for all the visitors that we're expecting in this newly refurbished park. Last year, we worked with the township of Wayne to, to take from them, they, they had deeded to us the Skylar Colfax House, which is the, I'm going to, I might get this wrong, and Kelly's going to get mad at me. I think it's the oldest structure in Passaic County. We were able to undertake construction documents, and we're going out to bid this year to refurbish that and preserve it for future generations. It'll be added to the park system, be another historic site on our roster. And in Ringwood, we're rehabilitating the Harry Vreeland House, which is in the Highland Meadow Park in Ringwood. So we're investing in, in the park system and our historic sites throughout Passaic County, which has, in Passaic County and statewide, has seen that, you know, that attracts visitors, helps stimulate our local economy. This is just an overview of projects we have going on all over the county. In, in Wayne, we're nearing completion on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall project that Commissioner Lozara has spearheaded over the last few years. I spoke about the amphitheater, Dundee Island, which was the first new park on the Passaic County park system in 50 years, our first riverfront park. We transformed what was a homeless encampment into a beautiful recreational facility. This Phase Two pushes the park further up north, connects it with Pulaski Park, which is a city park, and also restores an old rail bridge into a pedestrian connection into Garfield, who is also making improvements on, on their side of the river. Lambert Castle is undergone close to $12 million worth of investment in both the castle, the carriage house, and, and the adjacent site. Lambert Tower, which sits above Lambert Castle, is a project is just starting on, on improvements to the tower to preserve that. And we're going to be under design for further improvements at Gofford Park in the north end, near where our maintenance facility is. It's the, pretty much the last part of Gofford Park that, that needs some TLC. But there's been significant investment in Gofford Park over the last 10 years, if you've known. And then Peckman Preserve, which is our, our only park in the township of Little Falls. We've been designing improvements there, working with local officials, and this is the subject of our pre-nakers grant application. So we'll hopefully, either later this year or early next year, break ground on this project. And then the Highlands Rail Trail, which Phase One, we've awarded a, a $3.4 million contract for. It'll be our first recreational facility in the borough of Wanacue, transforming an old rail line into a pedestrian-only and bike-only pathway through the borough. And, and this slide is more focused on, on sort of hard infrastructure, bridges and roads. You know, I know Mr. DeNovis here, he would talk about how 20 years ago, all of our bridges were in a state of shambles. And we're at a point now with the, the financial planning that this board has done, where we are on top of making sure that all of our bridges are structurally sound, through our engineering department, are identifying bridges that need to be addressed, and every year, investing all over Passaic County and making sure that our roads and bridges are safe and passable, which is an important factor in, you know, bringing investment into the county. So if there's any questions, we'd be more than willing to entertain them now. From the commissioners?
Thank, uh, thank you, Matt. That was very informative. I, I'm a step ahead because I sit on the budget committee with Pat and Sandy. Pat, again, great job. Your, your cheapness continues to pay dividends for our county every year, and I appreciate that. Do any of my colleagues have any questions that they want to ask here during the meeting? Okay.
There, there is a resolution I, I just want Rich to talk about briefly, in case anyone has any questions about the cat bank.
Sure. So in addition to approving the, the budget tonight, we, we, we're going to ask you to approve a resolution. It's called the, a resolution to exceed the index rate. And, and we do this every year as a matter of formality, but there's always a lot of confusion about it. So we've indicated before that our budget is going to increase 1.97%. The state allows us to, to go up to 2.5% without any sort of approval. We ask you to, with this resolution, it allows us to go up to 3.5%. And the reason we're doing that is the difference between the 1.97% and, and the 3.5%, we can bank, and we can use it toward future years' budgets. And the reason you want to do that is you never know if something unexpectedly is going to come up, something operationally that you're going to need to, to fund in your future year's budget. This gives you the tools to do that moving forward. And, and that's why we ask you to do this every year.
Thank you, Rich. Thanks, everybody. Great work.
All right. Thank you.
Is that, that concludes your administrative report?
Director, yes, that concludes my.
All right. Thank you very much. For those of you following along on the agenda, we're up to page two, letter I there at the top. And with that from my colleagues, I'm going to take a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Second.
Okay.
Moved by LaPore, seconded by Cruz. Roll call. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Duffy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallo?
Yes.
Commissioner James? Commissioner LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. All right. Budget matters. J1 is a resolution to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cat bank, as Rich just explained to us pursuant to NJSA 40A, 44-45.15. Can I have a motion? Move it?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. J2, a resolution introducing our budget for this year. Have a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second, yeah.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. J3, Lou, I think that's you.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to read into the record, Director. Public notice calling for a public hearing for the cap resolution and the Passaic County budget for 2024 on, will be held on March 26, 2024 at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. That brings us to number one, Guarantee Ordinance 2024-01. Can I have a, is this, do I start with a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I should probably. Amended and reinstated guaranteed ordinance of the County of Passaic, New Jersey securing the Passaic County Improvement Authorities, County of Passaic Guaranteed Revenue Bonds, Senior Housing Project Series 2024 in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on Guarantee Ordinance 2024?
I'll move that.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Just to be clear, this isn't the public portion. This is specifically about the guarantee ordinance. Does anyone present desire to be heard regarding Guarantee Ordinance 2020, 2024?
See, no one at the podium. I moved close to public portion.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt Guarantee Ordinance 2024-01?
Move it.
Motion made by Duffy, seconded by LaPore. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Bond Ordinance 2024-04. Lou?
Bond Ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for the Passaic County Community College in, by, and for the County of Passaic, New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $3,944,831 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
All right. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 24-04?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Duffy. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
LaPore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Now, again, this is one of those limited person, purpose, public portion. Now, again, this is one of those limited purpose public portions if you want to be heard on the bond ordinance regarding the community college.
See no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 24-04?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Bond Ordinance 2024-05.
Bond Ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for Passaic County Community College in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of... Okay, I'm, all right, sorry, I apologize. Sum of $2,988,222 to pay for the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations, and to provide the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 24-05?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Okay, folks, this is the last of those limited purpose public portions. Does anyone present desire to be heard on Bond Ordinance 24-05?
See no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Gallo. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 24-05?
So move it.
Seconded by Lapore.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Can I have a motion to resume the regular order of business?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Okay, county commissioner reports. Does anyone up here desire to say anything?
Yes, I would, Director. Being the fact that we see all these union members here, the issue is with this PLA. I'd like to find, see, notice a couple of things, and why are we not using the PLA on the jail?
Anything else? Any other county commissioners have a report?
I don't have a specific report, but I would remiss if I don't take this opportunity to wish my wife a happy birthday, who's at home with our kids, and we are here doing the county business.
Right.
That's all I have.
That you win. Hopefully she's watching.
Yeah.
And happy Independence Day to our Dominican-American community, right?
Happy 180th birthday to the Dominican Republic, which is also celebrating Independence Day today.
But not your wife. Anybody else? All right. That brings us to the end of the county commissioner reports. In the absence of communications, we've reached, but I think some of you may be waiting for it, which is what's called the oral portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
I'll move it.
Second.
Who moved it?
I did.
You did. Lozara. Moved by Lozara, seconded by Cruz. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Okay, give me 10 seconds here. This is the public portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board can approach the podium. We ask you to begin by stating your name and address. We let you know that you have three minutes per person and that everything you say will become a part of the public record of this meeting. Ma'am.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Wanda Sawyer. I live at 125 East 30th Street, Patterson, New Jersey. I am a CWA Local 1037 member and vice president. Six months ago, I asked you to stand with us in support of a fair contract for the 300 workers at the Passaic County Board of Social Services. We do not bargain directly with the county commissioners, but two county commissioners, Mr. James and Mr. Bartlet, sit on the Passaic County Board of Social Services. For the past four years, the Passaic County Board of Social Services only meets virtually. Therefore, we must come here today to address Commissioner James and Commissioner Bartlet in person. In June of 2021, Governor Murphy signed legislation and executive order 244 ending the COVID-19 public health emergency. For the past 32 months, the Passaic County Board of Social Services has hidden behind expired executive orders to avoid facing the workforce while denying us a fair contract. From where we stand today, we are two miles away from the American Labor Museum, the Bottle House, the meeting place of over 15,000 strikers who participated in the 1913 Patterson Silk Strike. Patterson has a history of workers fighting for respect from their employers and the politicians who have lost their way and forgot who they represent. All these years later... All these years later, we shouldn't be having the same fight. But let me be clear, we will not be ignored. We are union strong, and what we do when we are under attack...
Stand up, fight back!
What we do when we are under attack...
Stand up, fight back!
As elected officials, you are all responsible for ensuring that public services are provided to those in need. The public need cannot be met without us, the workers. The best interests of the people of the state are served by the prevention or prompt settlement of labor disputes. The time to act is now. Fair contract now, and if we don't get it...
Shut it down!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down!
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. I stand before you today as a political organizer for La Una. I represent 25,000 members in New Jersey, New York City, Delaware, and Puerto Rico.
Could you start with your name and address?
Yes, so sorry. Rihanna Moon Sammy, 15, Rachel Lane, Monroe Township. I'm standing here to address you of a matter of significant importance concerning the Passaic County prison demolition and abatement project. As you all embark on this project, it is important that we take a moment to consider the complexity and challenges that this project presents. I'm here to request a 30-day extension for the bidding process to allow a more thorough examination and thoughtful consideration for the intricacies that involved. The county was recently involved in a project that had almost 29 work changes, which amounted to almost $3 million of additional work, which is a 36% increase. We believe that a 30-day extension would help negate this problem. This cannot happen again, and extra 30 days would allow for some resolve for some outstanding issues. In particular, I ask that you respond to my following questions in writing if possible. Firstly, what are the procedures if additional hazardous materials are found outside the scope of work that cause the contracts, the contract amounts to increase significantly? Second, has any hazardous material abatement occurred between 2009 and 2024? Lastly, will there be any provisions about community hire requirements on this project? To wrap up, having a project labor agreement or a PLA would help ensure the maximum benefits for the Passaic County community. It would allow the county to set working rules that protect workers as well as establish local hire goals, creating lifelong career for its residents. We are happy to work with all or any commissioners who are open. Thank you and have a good day.
Good evening. How you doing, commissioners? Army Star, Passaic, New Jersey, 566 McKinley Street, 35-year union. All we wanted some work, qualified, certified, and bona fide. I got an army behind me, we ready to do the right thing. Work with us and we work with you. Thank you.
What do we want?
Contract!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Contract!
When do we want it?
Now!
When do we want it?
Now!
When do we want it?
Now!
All right. There was a motion. Do we have a second? All right. Motion and second to close the public portion. Lou?
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James? Lapore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozara?
Yes.
Director Bartlet?
Yes. Ms. Hussey, if you're still here, could you just put those questions in writing for me? I did my best to write them down, but I do want to respond to you with respect to the folks from the CWA. As you noted, this is not the Board of Social Services, but we appreciate your being here and we hear you.
We wish you more in person, just like here too, Bartlet. Let's go. Next one, you gotta be in person.
All right. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Your time to make a public comment passed when we closed the portion. So let's move on. Anything else before we move on to our consent agenda? Counsel? All right. I'm going to pause for a minute so we can all hear each other up here on the dais before we move on to the consent agenda. We give folks an opportunity to leave.
Treat your workers like you should. A commissioner, you know, bro, treat your workers like you should. A commissioner, you know, bro, treat your workers like you should.
Okay. Counsel, are there any late starters or any need to go into executive session?
No, Director.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. All right. So consent agenda 01 through 043. Are there any items that any commissioner wants pulled and voted separately? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda 01 through 043?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Cruz?
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
James?[1743.75]